We're with us tonight and thank you for your patience over the last few minutes while we get set up. My name is Dr. Bailey. I'm the superintendent of schools. And again, thank you for your time tonight. We also have this meeting being recorded by the local cable company. The format of the meeting tonight will be for the experts who are with us tonight. We have Joe Cooney from MAC Services and Michael Sarici from WBA. They've both been involved in the testing in our schools. They are the experts. You're going to hear from them tonight to review what this all means. And then we will have an opportunity for people to ask questions. And we have a microphone there. But overall, we think we should be here no more than an hour. Okay? All right. So first, we're going to have Michael start, get us started with your presentation.
Okay. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, good. So I'm Michael Sarici from Work environment assessments LLC. And basically, I'm sorry I'm late. And thank you for waiting around. I'll try and get through this presentation as quickly as possible. Basically, I have been doing building assessments. Generally, I'm not a big urbanist. So we do work assessing schools for asbestos, mold, PCDs, and other kinds of hazards that are written in buildings. Most of the work that I do is in schools. And so I've been working with the district to try and at least identify some of the problems and we did some testing on September 21st at the elementary school. And so the kind of testing we looked for were mold, temperature relative to the humidity particulate, and carbon dioxide rehumanization. So what I'll present to you is what I found out when we did our testing. That thing was huge. And so that's what I just said. And so essentially, I'm going to get right into the results of it and the findings that we came up with when we did the testing. And so this is a chart that looks at the surface samples. And so what I did, let it fall off the stage, is to basically provide a chart here that showed the location of where we were taking the surface sample and the species that we discovered or the lab discovered. We sent out the labs to a third-party laboratory. And they looked at it. And what they determined in room two, two above the shelf, was there was minimal mold growth. And so we reported this to the teachers' union and to several administrators along with the along with other financial people and so on and so forth in the district. And so the second finding that we looked at was in room two, above the drop ceiling in the plenum. And so there's drop ceilings here, not this room, but where you can push them up. And so we took a swab sample above those drop ceilings and they found mold growth. In room seven, on top of the bulletin board, we found minimal mold growth. And then again, in 9B, in the library. And there were two samples that were taken in the library. Okay, so this is the second slide for the surface samples that we took. And you can see that there was mold growth in room 39, in room 35, in room 28. And for rooms 21 and 28, there were normal trappings, which basically means that the levels of mold on the surface were similar to the levels of mold that you find on the surface outside. We also took air testing for mold. And so the nice thing about taking surface samples is surface samples will show you mold, basically waste in the air. And this is a mold that lands on surfaces. And so it gives you a picture of what's in the environment over a longer period of time than what the next slide will show, which is air samples. And these are the air samples that we took. Air samples generally are compared to the outside sample. And they're also, when you also look at a minimum level, which we use 500 spores per humid meter is an action level. And so these samples were taken, like I said, in the air for like a seven to eight-minute period of time. And so that gives you kind of a snapshot of what's going on in the air. And then the surface sample gives you a longer picture of what's taking place on the surface. And you can see, we were alerted in room seven, in the library, and room 39, and in room 21. And those were our action level sites that we looked at. And you can see in the type of mold that was present was Penicillin acidilis, which was also present in prior samplings that was done by Joe's company. And so that was of interest to us because that company had detected it and then when we looked at it, we detected it too. And so these are the other environmental measurements that we took. Relative humidity, temperature, and particulates. And these levels were generally within range of what's acceptable for the Department of Public Health. And the temperature was a bit on the higher side, but 80 degrees Fahrenheit is what's acceptable by the Department of Public Health occupier of school room. The particulates were generally acceptable. There's no standard for both mold. There's no federal or state standard for mold. And so that's why we compare the inside to the outside. The inside and outside levels are generally similar here. Okay, so this is kind of a summary slide. And when we looked at it, 9 in the 11 samples detected some mold growth. And in the air samples, when you compare the inside to the outside, we found three or four, pardon me, out of the, I believe, 10 sites that we looked at that we determined should be action levels, which should take some kind of remediation. We also, the association at the school, who also paid for this, for our company to come in, also did their own questionnaire. And so in the questionnaire, they found that many of the respondents had high levels of respiratory illnesses. And so that got our attention. We also saw that a number of and those are some of the respiratory illnesses or the symptoms that were being exhibited. Many, 80% of the employees, they took the survey, responded. And so we had a good group that we believed would give us valid results because it was a large majority of the employees that answered the survey. And some examples here are bad, stuffy air. 60% said that the air was bad and stuffy. And also, there were unpleasant odors. 26% had complained of asthma. Is that my spelling? Okay. And state average is about 10 and 1/2%. And so we made recommendations to the district. We made an, and to the association. And we said that they should create a communication system among themselves to talk about issues as they come up and to try and get those issues addressed by establishing a health and safety committee. We said that the district should follow MAC's recommendation, which is the other company that had come in and taken a look at some of the environmental conditions in the building. They were here before we were. They were already in the process of making recommendations and implementing some of those recommendations. We suggested that employees be trained, particularly custodians, in order to sanitize those rooms that we thought should be sanitized, along with the library. We asked that the occupants of the room be notified that there was going to be this sanitization process going on and just in case some of them might be allergic to some of the detergents that would be used. And the IICRC is the organization that basically provides guidance to people that do mold remediation. And there are certain steps that need to be followed. We said that they should follow the steps particularly related to structural remediation. We had also suggested that the district and the employees investigate the extent of mold in the plenum, take swab surface samples in representative sections of the building. And so representative sections of the building. We had only taken two samples. Both of them had evidence of mold. And so we thought that the plenum, which is the area above the drop ceiling, should be looked at and investigated. And then a decision should be made on whether that should also be cleaned up. And then we had suggested that particularly room 39 disposed of any stained tiles. There was a roof, there was a leak above room 39 in the roof. And that the roof leak should be repaired. And that the area should be cleaned above the ceiling tile. We also suggested, as a general rule, that moisture be sealed off at the source. Taking moisture readings in the slab. We did notice that there were some buckled floor tiles. And that we thought that that may have been evidence of a slab that is emitting moisture. And so it would loosen the tiles. And so we thought that the slab should be investigated. Install technologies to reduce the moisture in the slab if necessary. Monitor humidity and temperatures levels at all seasons, especially in the summertime. The building's not occupied. And sometimes people are not around to basically alert someone to the fact that there may be high levels of moisture or leaks or high level of humidity. Consider purchasing an additional industrial dehumidifier. MAC had suggested, I believe, that industrial dehumidifier be installed. And I think it was installed. So we suggested that if another one needed to be installed, monitor leaks in the roof windows and doors. That's the end of my presentation. So that's what we found. Any questions?
Why don't we have Joe? I think the reports were pretty aligned. So why don't we have Joe Cooney from MAC Services give his presentation? And then we can entertain questions. Okay?
Hello. So I'm Joe Cooney. And with MAC Services, I don't have a presentation. Just kind of going to walk you through the history of how we got here, where we're at, and you know where we need to go in the future to avoid the situation. So we've been around since 2006, working in the environmental itself industry, with mold, asbestos, indoor air quality, similar to Michael. And we've been involved in a lot of different scenarios. Other school systems, hospitals, colleges, houses, everything from hurricane Katrina to residential. So we've been doing this a lot. We've seen a lot of different situations and worked a lot with mold over the years. So we were contacted in August to come in and check out some rooms where there were some complaints. We did sampling in about, I think, eight or nine buildings, or excuse me, rooms originally. We had results that were mixed. There were several rooms that were identified that did need some attention. Again, we call it an action level. Michael mentioned an action level. If you look at all the data, there's a lot there. There's a lot to absorb. So essentially, when we come to do an assessment for mold, we talk to the people. We talk to the people that manage the building, the occupants. And we get an idea of what's going on. And then we use certain tools. Air samples, direct surface samples, which can be swabs that Michael uses. We use actually tapeless. They serve the same purpose. And then the air samples. And the biggest thing we use is a visual inspection. Really look closely at areas that you normally look, using the right light and smell. So there's a lot of different tools we use. There's industry guidelines to help us interpret the data for air sample and tapeless. There's no steadfast, regulated, this is the number. If you blow this, you're healthy. If you blow this, you're not healthy. It doesn't work that way. So we look at the data, we interpret it. There's different levels that are used for that action level in the industry. Michael uses a little slightly more stringent than I do. Some use a higher, less stringent. But a lot of it comes down to experience and having experiences, seeing different situations and what worked and what didn't work and fixing that situation. So in this situation, after we had that initial amount of data, we made recommendations, they were implemented. We actually did some cleaning of some of the rooms and showed the staff how to go about it. There was a second round of rooms that were accumulated that they wanted to look at. So we looked at those. Things progressed. It got to the point where they made a decision that they wanted to sample every single room. And that's what kind of initiated the process of making recommendations for the entire building. We did air samples in every single room. Rooms this size, we did two. We also did, at the recommendation of Michael, direct sampling on the ceiling tile above, based off the results that he had saw. And what we came back with was the direct surface sampling showed a 50% rate of a level, an action level, I would call it, of results of mold spores. The air samples, however, were much, much different. We had every, I think, 77 samples, we had one room that we considered elevated, two slightly elevated, and then there was some that were borderline, I would call it. They were, even using this more stringent 500, they were just over that level. Overall, the rooms were in good shape from an air sampling standpoint. That's significant because the way our health is affected by mold spores floating in the air. And they're there all the time. You may not know it. They're microscopic. But mold's part of our world. It always has been. They're outside all the time. That's why we do a control sample. And we look at what's going on outside at the time. We're grabbing those samples on the inside because it's a snapshot of time. And they're related. If there's very high levels happen to be going on outdoors at the time, it's going to impact the indoor to some degree. So it's a comparative analysis. So the bottom line was that the air sample results were good, which is significant because that's how you're going to be affected. That's how your health is going to be affected. So even though there was evidence of the spores up above in that plenum, they weren't apparently impacting the breathing space below the ceiling lattice. So that's a good thing. You know, the other side of that is it still needs to be addressed from a longer point of view, as Michael indicated. So there would be a separate plan to address that above the ceiling. But for right now, and this was before the cleaning that just took place last week, I believe. Yeah, last week. You should know that. Thanks, Kevin. We've been here several times. But the results overall, from the air sampling standpoint, were good before this incident. They had made the decision that they want to sample every single room again after the air sample, which we were doing in the week. So we'll see what that brings. But overall, right now, I would say they've got a handle on it. That's not to say it's over. Really, the enemy in this building comes down to humidity. Controlling the humidity, controlling the dust. That can be a food source. Mold needs three things. It needs a food source, which can be wood, cardboard, clothing, anything porous. And it needs temperatures. And most importantly, it needs moisture of some type. Whether that's high humidity, or a leak in the roof, or a leak in the pipe. And the situation here has been high humidity over many, many years in combination with some accumulation of dust and different, you know, grime, or whatever you want to call it. And over time, that's built up. And that's how I think we got to the point where we're at prior to planning everything this past week. So the way to avoid that is really a one, is a two-step in our attack. Keep the place clean and keep the humidity below 60%. And the way to do that is going to take some investment. Short-term, I've seen other schools manage it with the industrial-sized dehumifiers. It works. It's a little clunky in that they're kind of stationed all over the place. And you have to kind of keep that out of the way of traffic and whatnot. But it's a more affordable short-term solution. A longer-term solution to control humidity is to get the infrastructure upgraded to have an air conditioning system that covers the entire school. By air conditioning, you do two things. You keep it at a comfort level temperature-wise, but you also squeeze out the humidity out of the air. And that's what is going to keep the mold from growing back. That's a larger investment. And it's something that obviously affects all of you from a town budget standpoint. But that's kind of where we're at right now. There's a lot more detail I could get into, but just trying to give you kind of more of a 10,000-foot level of kind of where we're at. And I'd love to take any questions for either one of us at this point.
Introduce yourself and give a chat to the schools.
My name is David Sebaran. I've got two daughters going here, Emma, room 6, to Silva. Elena, room 1, to Saksuza, and room 1, Silva. As far as HVAC goes, what were the levels of HVAC system?
We tested, I don't have the exact numbers, but I think eight or nine of the air handler units. And they did show a high level of pollen visually. They were dirty. They certainly needed to be cleaned up for sure. The filters looked good for the most part. I believe there was one unit that there was an issue where it was really dirty. Had to be cleaned up. So they definitely needed some attention.
Filters, was that on top unit side or within the school where the intake and exhaust were?
At the intakes. Those are supposed to be changed every three or four times a year. And that's a general indoor air quality item. The ones that I saw all looked in great shape. I think they may have just replaced them recently. So that would explain why they look great. But the point is that there's a system there changing them regularly. And that's what needs to happen. That's part of just managing indoor air quality.
Now, are we have the filters or are we just using a quick hot sauce?
No, these aren't have the filters. It's not required to be have the filters. They stated specifications of the manufacturing of the units. When they specify, that's what you need to do. Similar to your house, when you have an air filtration, if you have forced air system in your house, you have to change those filters. I know when I go change them, sometimes I feel guilty because I haven't changed them quick enough because they're pretty dirty. But it's the same idea.
Also, there'd be talks about seeing if we can get federal grants to get UV lights in the HVAC system?
That's a great question. Probably for Paul to answer.
So within, see if we have any state or federal funding to get UV lights put in the HVAC so it discourages any mold growth or any kind of bacterial contamination?
So what we've decided as a district is we're certainly not the professionals. And we don't want to dump all kinds of money into something that we're not sure about. And then what happens is we fix the HVAC, even though right now it seems like it's pointing towards that, right? But we put all kinds of money into that, and then next year, we have the same problem. So what the district has done is we brought in environmental firms. They've toured the building for free. They looked at everything. And they're actually writing up proposals on coming in and assessing what needs to be done from an environmental engineering point of view. So there were mechanical engineers, structural engineers. They're going to probably talk about testing the slab, as Michael had mentioned, the HVAC. So these are the experts that we think it's worth paying that money to have them come in and give us an assessment of what we need to dump our money into for the long-term solution. The short-term solution, as you know, was the deep clean and all of the things that we've done to date.
After the mold was detected, how long after the professionals called in?
Pretty much immediately. So we saw visible mold in August. We had a summer program at the school. People saw evidence of visual mold on the bulletin boards and on the chairs. It was like material chairs. And we got rid of all of it. We threw it away. We had MAC Services come in, assess the situation, professionally clean it. Our custodians also cleaned it. And then we had testing done again. We did this, we wanted to make sure that we were good to open school. Everything came back fine before school opened. We didn't think there was an issue. We knew that we had very oppressive humidity this past summer. If you remember, it was raining every weekend, you know? And like we had talked about, the building was not occupied. So we knew the weather probably was a big cause, right? But this could be years of, you know, maybe not attending to certain things in this building. The building was, I believe, built in the 60s. So that's, as soon as we found out, we called them in and we thought it was taken care of.
Is there any way to figure out what is the percentage for fresh air intake from the HVAC system? Because you're supposed to have fresh air pulled through into the system. Is that possible to find out on the phone?
No, that's something that they can certainly, you can calculate for sure. You're right, there's requirements for a certain amount of turning over of the air per hour. I don't know exactly the detail. Maybe Michael will.
Yeah, there are methods to test to find out how much fresh air is coming in.
It should be on the danter. You'll see it should be.
It should be on the danter, that the percentage of the air is coming into the system and before it hits the filters. So that's a pretty easy answer.
Did you see the one that was?
Normally, the intake on a rooftop unit is about 20%. In the wintertime, in the summertime, or in the warmer weather, you can open it further. But, and I don't know what they are in this building.
Do you just try to figure that out, please? Will somebody get back to you with that?
The custodians should know what it is, or whoever handles the HVACs.
And then when was the last time the HVAC ductwork was cleaned? Does anybody know that answer by chance?
It's out of there.
Before that, prior, before the mold issue came about? Does anybody know that last time the ductwork was cleaned thoroughly?
So I found out during this process that the last time the ductwork was cleaned was in 2017. And I have also found out that that is supposed to be done every two to three years. So clearly, the district was behind on that. I had actually thought this was being taken care of with ESSER funds, which we got during COVID time. And I believe that some of those funds were put towards HVAC issues. But our plan now is to be much more proactive. For example, we're getting pricing and we're going to have FMS, the middle school, cleaned over the Christmas break. So we're going to get on a second. We have a new business manager who is on top of this. He would have been here tonight. Unfortunately, he was ill.
Any given time, if you guys would help to clean out more than one, you know, help out volunteer time too as well.
I appreciate that so much. I appreciate everyone being here tonight and your time because this is our kids, our staff, and support. So thank you very much.
I think that's all my questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any questions, comments? How about, we have Joe Korea here, the health agent from the Board of Health. I was going to put you on the spot, Joe, but you've been pretty involved since the get-go. I've been sending you copies of the reports since the beginning. Obviously, when we have the testing done, sometimes it takes up to a week. Obviously, when we have the testing done, sometimes it takes up to a week. The district has actually spent the extra money to have those test results expedited because we wanted to know what needed to be addressed right away. So I've been in touch with you the whole time, and you know, from your point of view, maybe you could go to the microphone and, you know, just talk about how you were thinking about this whole situation.
Hi, my name is Joe Korea. Yeah, we have been notified by Paula at the early onset. The Board of Health has made aware of it. We have reviewed, it actually was in the building even during one of the walkthroughs. The Board of Health looked at it from the standpoint that the school themselves have their own playbook that they have to play by. And that they were very aggressive in looking for this problem from the get-go. They covered all the bases and then some. And what is going on, you heard from the experts tonight, there's nothing that's over the top. But at the same time, of course, we're very concerned about our students and our teachers and the people that are here. And I, again, I don't think the Board of Health or myself could say anything more than what the district, what the superintendent has done to really, really make sure that they dialed in on whatever problems there were. And again, continue to stay on top of this actively. There's a steering committee that maybe Paula will talk about. We were taking a look at all those different options, trying to weigh in, whatever's going to be the best, best bang for the buck as we move forward. But again, there was concerns. I mean, there was a huge problem, there was concerns. They were dealt right from the get-go through the school district, and continue to monitor and stay on top. And of course, at any particular point in time, our office is always open. So please, anybody, feel free to call us if there's concerns.
Thank you, Joe. Does anybody have any questions? Yeah, come on up. If you could just state your name and if you have children at the school.
I'm Allison Deanna, and I have my son Christian Deanna at the school. I had a question, you had mentioned that there was a roof leak. Is that before the repair? I know that they did the roof over the summer? Or is there still a roof leak?
No, my understanding, there's no more roof leaks. However, there was the remnants of that roof leak in one of the rooms. That was the cause, root cause of that elevated. That was the one room that we saw elevated results. And to be honest with you, so these numbers, I find that they're very useful to kind of quantify the amount of contamination. You can't quantify it to health. You can't directly connect a number to health. There's too many variables. But I have found it useful to be gauged, like what's going on. And it's based off of experience at the end of the project. What did we find? Oh wow, look at that number, that number was really high, no wonder we found that much. It was hidden when we found it. Oh, that number was elevated, but not real high. Okay, we found a root cause. It wasn't a crazy amount of contamination, which makes sense because the number wasn't really crazy. It was elevated, but not like twenty, thirty thousand. So it's a useful tool that way. And so direct to answer your question is, there was one room that did show the remnants left over, you know, damage from the leak. But to my knowledge, there's no current leaks in the building since the new roof has been installed. Maybe Steve can answer that better?
There's some dead end pipes. I just have two work orders today, I've got to double-check, we've been really jamming. But there was, it was what I call dead-end pipes, that they didn't seal correctly. It's not a roof leak per se, it's where the dead pipes were. And we're waiting for the roofs to come back. They were supposed to come back last week, but unfortunately, the rain, they were supposed to come.
And the other area, just to be totally transparent, that I noticed was the gymnasium closet. It sort of jets out from the building, and that area of the roof on the closet was not addressed during the roof repair. So we did have some leaks in there. I believe it's been addressed, Steve?
That's one of the two that I just learned today, they found a little spot.
Okay.
We couldn't find it until we emptied out the closet.
Yeah.
And now with this storm this weekend, they're dripping in.
Okay.
Well, that brings me to the next question. If you look at the gymnasium closet numbers, they're concerning, and I don't know if you could explain those to me?
From the last testing?
They were in the 1,000s, and then there was a lot more, like, it just stuck out to me.
So those rooms, Rooms 2021, 4041, oh yeah, the gym storage closet, yep, that was one of the, that was one of the, that would be a boardroom.
Kind of, you know, the children are playing with toys, balls, things like that. I mean, I think that's definitely has to get.
So they did, they did clean in that area? So it'll be interesting in that particular, that area, to see what the results are now, after.
Okay.
And we threw away anything that had visible mold on it? So like, anything like bean bags thrown away? Anything that really couldn't be cleaned was thrown away?
And did Surf Pro actually clean, like, actually basketballs, baseballs, things of that nature that they are playing with? Or was it just actual floors, walls, things of that?
So realistically, you know, any kind of balls that you're playing with outside? I mean, you know, that's part of what that package is, that you have balls outside. Mold is part of our world, I mean, I'm not saying that if you have a really badly contaminated ball, that means it's not being used very much. So it's a different situation. But generally speaking, that's not something that you really focus on as a root cause. It's more like mats that maybe got wet and over time have built up. I've seen that historically, experience-wise. That's kind of the area, the gym area, that you focus on, is things like that. The mats that, you know, they're on the floor all the time. Not so much the balls. I mean, those are going to be outside all the time, you know?
But just to give you an idea of what Surf Pro came in and did. They took the results from the most recent testing, which was prior to the cleaning. They worked very closely with Joe. And they prioritized those spaces that were either elevated or slightly elevated. There were only three or four spaces that were really concerning in that way. But they came in, and every piece of furniture, their goal was, they would go above the ceiling on those areas that, you know, had a concern. The goal is to do every room above the ceiling eventually, but in eight days' time, there was no way they were going to do that. But they did have a vacuum, all of the ceiling tiles on this side. All of the walls, the furniture. We went through the building yesterday, and they did lose, on Saturday, we had to evacuate the building. They did lose a whole entire shift, and they were already feeling a little bit behind. So we sent them home Saturday due to the bomb scare. And then they returned on Sunday. They finished Sunday evening, but we went around with them again on Monday. I called them and said, you know, I have a couple of concerns. We made a punch list of everything that we had concerns with, and they're going to work probably a complete shift again on Saturday to address anything that we noticed that perhaps was an oversight or, you know? But the priority was really those areas from the report, the furniture, they did fogging. I'm trying to think of everything else, you were here too.
Yeah, so I came in several days during the process because I wanted to make sure that they were focused efficiently. So that went, well, I was glad that I came in and kind of said, I took a shoulder, shoulder stand, I showed them, this is what we saw, this is what we saw, this is what you want to focus on. So it was a good, it was a good communication, as I know.
One other question. The commercial dehumidifiers that you have, can you explain to me how those work? My concern is the rate of dehumidifier seems to get more. We don't have any AC in the school as it is, so next, you know, September, when the kids are back to school, we now have industrial dehumidifiers on. We had, you know, I think it was eighty degrees or eighty-five degrees at one night for the parent-teacher conference. What is that going to look like for our children, having those dehumidifiers on in September with high humidity?
I can, I can tell you that I've seen it actually in process, in the real world. I set up a school system to do it, and that was not initially, did not. But it's far away that potential, I can tell you that.
Okay. And do they have to be emptied, or is?
So the way the industrial-sized ones work is they have an internal pump, and they have very long hoses. So the way it works is the internal tank fills up, and when it hits a certain point, it kicks in the pump, and that pump purges the water out to wherever they have to go, the sink or, you know, bathroom, wherever they, the closest spot is. And bear in mind, the high humidity season we're talking about is really from like May through October. So the kids aren't here, obviously, in the summertime. So it's really that May and, you know, May and June, you're going to get through it that part of the year, and then September, and lately, it seems October's been pretty, pretty warm. So you're just kind of battling those fringe months before and after the summer as far as the kind of heat. But again, the game far outweighs the higher temps. It wasn't a significant factor in the decision. I know with other school systems.
And my last question, I promise. The air samples, do you think that if there was airflow, such as fans or things going, that the air, that the results would have been different versus like the stagnant air in the rooms as it is?
Yeah, absolutely. That's why you make sure there's no fan running, riot running, because that's not going to give you an accurate snapshot. Because if you're blowing spores away from them, the way it works is it's a pump that just sits there. It's pulling in air, and who else is pulling in the air?
No, going back to your air samples, that you were taking air samples just in general? And it doesn't seem like there's any air conditioning or anything that's kicking on, no fan? So ventilation really, I mean, other than the heat? But if there was that, would it make a difference?
Oh, it helps. Yeah, air circulation helps. I thought you were asking, while we're doing the air sampling, would that have made a difference? And that's why we don't, we shut them off, so to answer that question. But to answer you, the question you're really asking, yes, air circulation absolutely helps for sure. Especially when you don't have air conditioning. And that, and they did have quite a few fans running when I first came here in August. But it only does so much. It helps, but in this situation, you need aggressive control of the humidity levels. Fans don't cut that by themselves.
And do we think we have it in the budget to upgrade this, or is?
No, but we will be looking for funding. That's more of a long-term solution. I am meeting with the town administrator tomorrow to discuss some options. I've been looking into grants. Unfortunately, Acushnet doesn't qualify for some of these grants, but we're still asking for, if we could, because we feel as though this is something the town and our district really needs. So so far, they've entertained the conversation with us. I'll see where that goes, but, you know, we're looking at all of our options at this point.
I did see that in the budget, there was maybe a proposal for a $9 million golf course, so maybe this could, you know?
Yeah, I don't handle that budget, that's the town's budget. I handle the school budget. But even with the school budget, the school could not, we basically probably spent between, at this point in the year, $225,000 on dealing with this issue. The deep clean was $175,000, okay? It's a lot of money, but the budget, we're doing savings. We are trying our best to absorb that. We do not have the means to address any long-term solutions at this point. That's why we have established a steering committee, which consists of a select board member, the town administrator, finance committee, Board of Health, our facilities director, our teachers' union president. It just takes a real team effort for us to work together to figure this out because this didn't happen overnight, it's not going to be fixed overnight. But I think together, if we work together, figure out the root cause, which is why we want the engineers to come in to help us figure it out. But, you know, we have been pretty aggressive in terms of addressing the issues at this point. And, you know, I appreciate all of the family's support in terms of having to be off for two and a half days. I just want you to know, I looked into many, many options. We looked around to relocating the school, so that perhaps we could address both the short term and the long term. Maybe, you know, go somewhere for three to six months to get this taken care of. It just was not feasible, it was not something sound that we could do. Our school is too big, we have to be in multiple locations. But I have to say, the community, the outreach that I did with the community, everybody was extremely supportive and there for us in terms of a community. And that's the way I think Acushnet can be on this long-term solution. I find that the Board of Selectmen, the town administrator, the finance committee, everyone is working together to figure this out. We don't want to spend millions of dollars on something if we don't know that that's the root cause, right? Because we know we don't have necessarily that money laying around, right? So we want to make sure that if we are going to put money towards something, and it probably will be a lot of money, we want to make sure we're putting money towards the right thing, which is why we're getting those engineering firms in.
Did they give you a deadline as to when they would have that back? Is it like years, months, like?
So we, the three companies we had come in, they've toured the building, they will be submitting proposals, they're actually in the process now of submitting proposals, and we're working with them to hire them now. And then we'll, we feel as though this is something, there's a sense of urgency, okay? I feel that way. So I will be working closely with town officials to help us, politicians, state representatives, anybody who will talk to us about helping us resolve this issue.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me just start by one thing. You asked one question on the closet, the kids' toys are, that perhaps I report to the businessman, I'm just people that the facilities director, I report to Patrick McIntyre, unfortunately, couldn't be here tonight to say, man, he reports to the super. She probably forgot, but the Saturday after we found out there was an issue in there, we came in, a crew of three, we emptied the whole room, got rid of some stuff, like she mentioned, the bean bags, I sent her pictures so she saw them, we threw out. The larger balls, plastic balls and clay balls, those all were brought out back here, washed and dried. So the whole room got emptied, everything got cleaned, went back. I don't know if you ever seen that closet, but the gym teacher has enough stuff to keep all the kids busy for probably a lifetime. So we don't usually go in that closet, she doesn't like us messing with her stuff, to be honest with you. So it was mostly stuff in the back, it didn't get used as much. But the whole closet got emptied on a Saturday, we redid everything throughout, like I said, throughout the stuff that had some growth, there was some stuff in growth in the back, like the bean bags, and we did clean the walls. I just don't think the super federal medicated.
Oh no, listen, I remember. I just want to say though, anytime anything is brought to our attention, it is handled immediately. Sometimes people don't always see what's handled, and I just want to say, like, there's a lot of misinformation out there, a lot of confusion. I appreciate the families who have called me directly, because you didn't get a direct response from me, and you're going to get the truth. There's a lot of people out there sometimes on social media, and people read this stuff, and they believe it, and it's not true. We would not be occupying this building if it wasn't safe, okay? Here we are, and I know that Mike wanted to speak.
Okay, I'll make it quick. I just want to support the idea of actually, as a long-term goal, is upgrading the HVAC system. Installing a mechanical air exchange system in a building is really what this building and many, many buildings across Massachusetts and the country really need to do. We're dealing with viruses that we've never had to deal with. An advanced HVAC system will filter viruses. And the system that's here right now can probably not do that. We have global warming. It would be great to have a system that could actually cool air, especially in the summertime. It's hard to concentrate when it gets hot in a building like this. And also, the moisture issue can be alleviated significantly if you're able to treat the air, so you can take some of the moisture out of the air. So supplying more fresh air into a building is a goal that not only this community is going to be have to deal with, but other communities around the country are struggling to grapple with these kinds of HVAC issues all over the place. I think there was something just recently, not this week, but last week, on 60 Minutes, where someone from Harvard came on, I don't know if you saw it, but they're talking about the HVAC systems in the rest of the country in schools really needing to be upgraded.
I agree. You know, you can't get away from here. My name is Lisa Caballo, I'm actually the ATA president. And back in the summer, I just kind of want to like sum this up and maybe like, like make people feel a little bit better about what's been going on around here. So in the summer, I got a call, there's mold in the building, the custodians are cleaning it, people were a little bit alarmed, right? You're seeing mold on seats, teacher chairs, bulletin boards. And then the custodians were here cleaning that. So I came in the day after I got back from vacation and met with Dr. Bailey right away. We talked about it, that's when they called MAC Services to come in here. They did some air quality testing, and the rest is exactly what Joe said. I came in.